This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, looks like we are live, so I'm going to call to order meeting of the Southampton Select Board for November 25th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. If we can all start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anybody here for Citizen Speak? Yes, Robert.
Robert Floyd, Wednesday 6th, College Highway, will be speaking, wearing two hats. The first one, as a resident, I'd like to share the news about the success of the silent auction for the Southampton community cupboard Saturday. They've raised $2,500 so far. The remaining items, 10 out of 42, will remain at the church Wednesday afternoon, Friday afternoon, and especially on the afternoon of December 7th, Sunday, there'll be photography reception at the church. And there's about a couple hundred dollars that was raised by the sale of books for the special art program for children.
Nice, very good.
So, everybody was not too shabby, everybody was pleased. I thank everyone for their support and participation. Now, wearing the moderator's hat, the special town meeting information session will be held Thursday evening, December 4th, 7 o'clock, right here.
Okay. And that'll be televised, right?
Yes, it will be, live.
Okay, very good.
Do you want to mention Scott's millability? I don't want to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Presentation for the world, but it's very much on topic.
Yeah, he'll get to it, so, okay. Anything else? So, that'll be just going over the articles for the special town meeting?
Later.
On the December 4th?
On the 4th. And we've had earlier, but Thanksgiving, I figured a conflict of interest, so
Right, yeah.
We have it a couple days before, at least.
Sure, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Good, all right, thanks, Robert. Anybody else here for anything on the, that's not on the agenda? Anybody? All right, just a couple announcements. So, first of all, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, a little bit early, but just a reminder that town hall offices, including the library, and especially also the transfer station, will be closing at noon tomorrow, Wednesday. So, make your plans accordingly, especially if you need to go to the transfer station. Okay, so with that, I think we are about ready, we can open up the tax classification hearing. So, could I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so, in accordance with Section 56 of Chapter 40 of the general law, we are holding a public hearing on the question of adopting the percentages of the total tax levy to be borne by each class of real property, residential, open space, commercial, and industrial, and personal property for the fiscal year 2026. So, I'll invite our assessor, Dave Zagorski.
Hi. So, the vote before the Select Board is to determine whether to do a single or split.
Speak a little louder, Dave, so we can all hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
The motion I had before the Select Board is to determine whether to do a single or split tax rate, and to grant any open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends doing a single tax rate, as we've always done. It is typically recommended that communities have at least a commercial base of at least 20% in order to do a split tax rate. So, we recommend doing a single tax rate, putting, doing a split tax rate would put a burden on the commercial properties that are in town, especially the small commercials. The adoption of an open space discount, we don't have any property that qualifies under open space, therefore, there are no properties in this class to adopt an open space discount for. The adoption of a residential exemption, that's typically for towns with high vacation home, second home base, so no residential exemption is recommended. And a small commercial exemption, again, we don't have the commercial base in order to go with that. So, the motions before you are to do a single or split tax rate, and do no open space discount, no residential exemption, and no small commercial exemption.
And your actual recommendation, if I heard that correctly, is to do a
Do a single, single tax rate. Yep, we've always done it. No reason to.
Just maybe just to review for people
Would you like the motion?
What, just while people are listening, just because they may not be able to see the screen, which is terribly not good when it's televised, but just to review this. So, it looks like a residential percentage is about 94% in town, and then commercial is 3%, industrial less than a percent, and personal property 2%. So, basically, around 6% is all of our CIP categories, commercial, industrial, and personal property, and 94% is the residential.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
By value.
Yes, by value.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions? I want to speak to anything about valuation or anything?
Well, just before we jump into motions and move to our next item, can you talk a little bit about the new growth?
Yeah.
That is in your report, because I think
Well, we were, we were under our average, three-year average for new growth for this year, there just wasn't any, too many new homes being built, or at least not completed. And they're just, a lot of times, we'll get new growth from EverSource or the public utilities, and again, there just wasn't any new growth in there.
Do you happen to know roughly what our average, our three-year average is?
Um, you know what?
Around 200?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
A bit less than 200.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, because I guess one of the important points of this report is, it looks like it's only going to be $118,000, new growth, that gets added to it, so
Yeah.
You know, the likelihood of having any significant additional funds is zilch.
Right, I mean, that is, that would basically account for more renovations, or
That doesn't even cover the health insurance increase, of 250,000, so.
So, that would be more just renovations and additions to people's homes, not building new homes necessarily, I mean, that's what
The new growth is all renovations, new homes, you know.
But this figure
Yes.
But it's $8.3 million in new growth, but when you calculate out the tax.
Right, yeah, but I mean, it's still less than what we've had before, because we've had
Right.
Probably more homes being built in the past couple of years, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, yep.
That's why I just wanted to clarify that.
So, procedural-wise, if we act on the recommendation of the assessor and take that vote, all we're doing is approving a number yet to be identified as our mill rate.
Yeah, well, all you're doing is to basically determine the burden of, you know, between residential and commercial, so you're just voting to do a single tax rate, whatever that may be, split tax rate, whatever that may be.
And what's the, what's the, what's the next step that triggers, when do the taxpayers find out what the mill rate's going to be?
So, our accountant is still working on the tax rate recap, so once he's finalized his numbers, and we have it entered on the Department Revenue website, then the tax rate gets determined by those computations.
And the state certifies it?
Yes, the state certifies it, yep.
Do you anticipate it to be less than what it is currently, 14, 17?
Typically, when you see a seesaw effect, so when values go up, the tax rate goes down, when values go down, tax rate goes up, so I don't want to speak as, you know, an estimate or anything, but I would imagine it'll probably go down, I don't know by how much at this point.
Okay.
Scott, do we have a sense of where the accountant is in terms of doing the tax recap, just offhand?
He just has to finish up the debt service with the treasurer, so it should be probably middle, early next week.
Okay, good.
Technically, though, I mean, they are on schedule, right? We're not behind schedule on this particular issue.
No, we're, we're
We're up in front of it.
We're ahead of where we usually are, I think, yeah.
That's great, glad to hear that, so, good.
Well, when the department, starting with the A, assessors, is on track, perhaps we can start going to building and grounds and custodial.
Sounds good, all right. I think, unless anybody else has any questions?
I do, if you don't want a motion, I have a question.
Well, go ahead, I wanted to give everybody a chance for questions.
And I apologize, I'm the liaison from the Select Board to the assessors, and not only did I have conflict this past month, after I finally realized I have conflict that's coming after the holiday, but this is an issue that interests me a lot, and it may seem apparent, but how many owner unknown lots do we have within the town? Therefore, we have no one to send tax bill to.
That I'd have to look up, I don't, I don't have that answer right now. I can run a report for you and have that tomorrow.
Because along with some other issues, we've given ample ventilation to, like, Poly核Water Company. I want to make sure that every landowner is paying what they equitably should.
Yep.
And if there's an unknown owner profiting from the property and its resources, we want to be on top of that. I just flagged that, and I'm sorry if it's cryptic, but I'm with you, and
I don't think we have too many owner unknowns, because, you know, usually something will come, but nothing really pops out, so.
We have a few that are out of state, for sure, I think.
But, well, I mean, if they're owner unknown, then we don't know who the owner is, so nobody's getting a tax bill on it, you know, nobody's, yeah.
People don't live here, but they own property here, so.
But there's still an assessment being placed against that property that's
Yes, yeah, yep.
So, okay.
And then, there are tax titled properties that are still in the name of the delinquent prior owner, and we'll get that cleaned up.
Yeah, that's the tax collector's side.
I'm all in the yard to you.
There we go.
I'll make a motion, motion to set the
Flat rate.
I'll make a motion to set the, that's not the wording the assessor used, though.
Single.
Single tax.
Single tax rate, and not adopt any of the exemptions.
Okay, have a motion in a second. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we will take that recommendation and wait to hear what the tax rate is. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, bro.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's have a motion, we have to close the tax hearing, please.
Move to close the public, the tax hearing.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, very good. Thank you, okay. Next up, Scott, Town Administrator, report, please.
I just want to thank our Highway Superintendent Randall Kim for the additional visuals over on Palmero Meadow Road Bridge. I do want to just say that we are currently working with Town Council as well on the strategy regarding ownership of the bridge, I won't go into too many more details, but we hope to have some movement in the next, you know, month or two. So, I don't want to go into too much detail, because it could end in possible litigation. I do want to also point out that we received the memo from the Financial Management Resources Bureau that I forwarded to everyone, we're going to be meeting with DLS probably the first or second week of September, just to review everything, then we'll make the memo public by
December.
Did I say November?
December.
Oh, I'm sorry, December, it's all kind of blurry at this point of the year. So, we're going to, the finance team is going to sit down with DLS, kind of go over everything. I did forward it to our coworkers over at Hampshire Regional, so part of it does include them, but then, once we have our meeting with DLS, I'll make it public, and probably have a few meetings about that, and send to the school committee and other stakeholders, so.
And these will be recommendations for improvements, I take it, from
Financial, yeah, focused on financial improvements.
Okay.
Yep. In regards to the special town meeting, which is coming up on Saturday, the 6th, at 10:00 AM, if anyone has any questions, and they're on Facebook, feel free to join me between 2:00 and 2:30 on Facebook Live, and try to answer any questions, no guarantee, so.
What day?
That's going to be Monday.
Thank you.
And then, we have the ADA plan has been posted on our website, we will have a presentation on December 9th. We'll probably have them go first, but we'll also make it available online as well, so it's quite a lengthy evaluation, but, so if anyone has time to read through it, again, it's recommendations, so I'm going to let the experts kind of explain a little bit more.
So, this was, it was an ADA evaluation of all of our town buildings, is that correct?
And some of our outside resources as well.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, it's already posted on the town website, so you can find a link to it there. Good, all right, any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah. The, well, first, a suggestion, I think, because we have the Fiscal Management Resource Bureau report, that we should post that on the website to start the education process. And two, I was going to bring this up later, but since it's on the agenda this way, I want to address the bridge on Palmero Meadow Road. I know recently, in the past 30 days, there's been two accidents there, it's my understanding that in both cases, for different reasons, both drivers were impaired, and that's not to say that both drivers were under the influence of alcohol, they were just impaired cognitive issues that led to the accidents. But the second thing that I'd like to do formally, because I've mentioned it before, but I guess I want to formally request on the record, I want to understand as a Select Board member, what our ability is to abandon that section of the road and close it, depending on where we go. It may behoove us just to put up Jersey barriers and shut that down, so I don't know if our Highway Superintendent has enough information, or if we need to ask KP Law or something, but I think before we go too far down where I think we're going, that's a data point that I would like to have.
I think that's part of what Scott was referring to in his report, that he's
I heard ownership, that's what I hear from Scott's report, they're talking about ownership. I'm talking about wherever that Southampton line is, you know, do we have, does the Select, it's a town road, it's not a state road, does the town, the town accepts the roads, what's the process to not accept the road and to close it, if we're going to be potentially dealing with a $1 to $3 million price tag?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll ask Katie on that, whether or not we can actually close a bridge to another community, I think that's going to be part of the discussion we have with Town Council.
Yeah, just, if we can, we can, if we can't, we can't, and if we can't, why?
I'm sure there's some 175-year-old rule out there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks, John.
Yep.
Yeah, Stephen.
I think that's a critical bargaining point, because it's a huge expense, and our neighboring community, whatever you want to say about our mutual obligations, is denying any responsibility. So, if we got to a 50-50 agreement, I think we'd have an agreement, perhaps, but it's still a lot of money, it's on top of the operating budget and every other need in town, so we need to have clarity about the cost, but we can only get there by asserting our rights.
Correct, and I also believe there's at least one other similar bridge within our jurisdiction, that this is going to pop up as well, if not two more, and I know the Highway Superintendent knows which ones, we all get them as Select Board members, we get the report, the engineer reports.
Yeah, we have similar bridges that were constructed in the same manner, around the same time.
Yeah, no, but there's, there's one that, I would have thought that one would have closed first, based on the report that came from the engineer's office, so.
Has not yet.
Intertown?
It's intertown, no, it's all, that bridge is all us.
Right, so, all the more reason for us to ascertain our rights.
Yep, so that's why Scott has already reached out to legal counsel, so we'll let him pursue that and see where we go with that.
And to call your state rep and state senators and request additional Chapter 70 money.
There you go, yeah, exactly.
Good luck with that.
Okay, all right, how about Select Board reports? Anybody have any meetings coming up? Ellen, anything from your departments?
Been quiet, hopefully coming up soon, we'll have more, quiet.
I think there'll be a con-con meeting at some point in, maybe the second week or so of December, and I don't know about Board of Health, but those would be a couple to watch out for. Yeah, okay. Steve?
Again, apologies to my colleagues on the Board of Assessors. Open Space Committee has been working on three warrant articles, three acquisitions, using a variety of funding, it's covered elsewhere, I won't belabor it now, but then beyond that, there are many properties that are coming to our attention that need to be evaluated and prioritized for available funding for conservation and natural resource value, and there are excellent grant opportunities, so I'm going to bridge from open space to ad hoc grants. Now, I'm going to bridge out to housing. I'm on the Housing Authority, and they continue to drive forward with research and education about how they might advance an affordable housing component at what we now call officially, write it down, 125 College Highway, Southampton Commons, whatever it's going to be. Housing Trust, kudos to Chris for driving this forward, and Housing Authority, I'm delighted to be a part, and we're still trying to get our organizational documents together.
Okay. John?
The, as far as schools go, the, we're well into the early stages of negotiations with the MTA, that seems to be flowing very nicely.
Health insurance.
No, no, the three-year contract, yeah, which health insurance is one of them. And it's been represented to us that Central Office is on track to get the first round of budgets in.
Good.
Which will be in January, for Central Office, Central Office and Hampshire Regional, then everything flows down.
Yeah.
So, things are moving along nicely.
Moving along, okay, that's good, good to hear that, okay. Good. On my end, not too many meetings this last couple weeks, there was a meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee about, I think it was last week, the end of last week. They're kind of recognizing that they're not going to be going forward very soon, certainly not before the Public Safety Building Committee, most likely, but they do still have a concern about the space and the programming that they're dealing with already in the, in the current senior center, and the overflow that they use this room for, so at some point in time, they're going to be meeting, along with the COA Board, which I think is meeting next week, if I'm not mistaken, and they're probably going to be, I would expect them to come before the Select Board at some point, maybe in January, with some ideas about how to rearrange some current space and make better use of their space, so we'll wait to hear what they come up with, but I think they're, they're feeling like they're in a situation where they're not sustainable with the kind of classroom exercise stuff that they have, in terms of their space and the workshops and everything that they do, so they're trying to figure out ways to accommodate everybody that's there. They had a huge luncheon for Thanksgiving, and had about 75 people for lunch, luncheon, Thanksgiving luncheon, which was great, so that's really the maximum capacity that room can hold, so I expect they'll be coming to us at some point. No other meetings yet, Grant Committee or anything else, we've been silent for a week or two, so we'll pick it up again in December if there's anything on the agenda that we need to deal with. Okay. All right, other than that, we'll move on to new business. All right, very first thing up is a reconsideration of the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission application for pure food market. This is something that we had dealt with a while back, I'd had gone through various steps, gotten to the final stages, we thought, and then there've just been a few issues at the ABCC level, and so this is actually a re, what shall I say, a revised application. It's still the same issue of going from just a wine and beer permit to an all alcohol permit, it would classify pure food market as a package store, to do that, and there were just some issues because the former owner dad, Dad Don Puza, when he passed away, there needed to be some documents dealt with in probate, and so there were various things that have gone back and forth with all that legality, and now we finally have a real application that we will, we signed it once before, but this has got everybody's names fully in their legal parameters, but we need a motion to also look at the change of manager and the change of officers, because the officers and directors obviously changed when Donald passed away, and then there's a change of the category to, from all alcohol and wine, from wine and malt, sorry, to all alcohol. So, I think this is, this is basically, you've got the documents before you, we should be able to get this hopefully submitted next week sometime, and hopefully this will make it through ABCC, they've been very, very much a stickler, I guess I would say, in terms of things like, it's instead of, you know, just having the names consistent, so like Vicky Allen versus Victoria A., you know, it's like, okay, people, we'll make all these corrections, so there've been a lot of just small correction things, and it's more just being sure that every document reads the same, in terms of the names of the directors and so forth, so that's kind of the scenario here. So, the, the current, or the new president, I guess, or President and Treasurer is Victoria A. Puza Allen, the name of the Vice President is Teresa Puza, and the name of the Clerk is Joshua D. Puza, and he is also the Manager.
I'll make a motion to accept the documents submitted to us as being genuine, and of the body that had the authority to vote the change of directors and officers, and accept them as stated on the documents.
And the change of category as well.
I'm just going to do that as a separate vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, so change of directors, I'm sorry.
Presidents and officers, as stated on the forms, that we accept them to be true and accurate.
Okay, fine.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the change as voted by the citizens of this town three years ago, and that we ratify the actions of the town citizenship by supporting this change, and urge the ABCC to immediately act upon it.
Okay, have a second, please. All right, Ellen, second, all right, thank you, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, okay, well, we will hope so, and we, I think we ran into a bit of a buzzsaw with people in Boston, but it seems like things are working now, and the, we've had the governor, I'm sorry, Governor, Senator Vila's office has been helping out as well, trying to push some things through for us, so I think we've got, got people working on it, so everybody's got eyes on it, and it should hopefully keep us moving. So, hopefully by the time we meet, by the end of December, we might know something on that one, so thank you. Next up, I guess, plumbing and gas fees, I
Is this a change?
It's in our package, I guess, it's on, I've got a hard copy, Scott, I don't know if it was in our electronic copy.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
Well, there's a sheet in here, but it doesn't indicate if it's a change.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the change was, I don't have it on the, it wasn't in my electronic packet, I think, Scott, I didn't see it, but I have the hard copy here, but so this was a fee schedule for plumbing and the gas inspectors, is that correct?
That's correct, I mean, page 23 of the packet.
Okay, page 23, maybe I missed it.
Do a side-by-side here.
Hold on. Oh, yeah, it is in the package, page 23, sorry, but I don't know, as John mentioned, I don't know what the old fees were that we were looking at.
And it might hopefully indicate at the bottom when the prior set of fees were adopted.
Yeah, I can, it should be up on the website here, hold on a minute, have you got it, Scott, or is that the old one?
Yeah, this is the old one, let me just
I move we table this till our next meeting.
Well, let's make sure he finds it first, why do you want to table it right away? Let's give him a chance to find it.
And just get it so you can actually view it.
I'd like to have a clear presentation to our public who are paying the fees.
We can put it off until the next meeting, if you want to, I'm not sure we have the old one handy.
Right, I don't want to put anybody under undue pressure.
There was something that was approved just last year, but that may not have been, that was
That says August 19, 2025. That says August 19th, 2025.
Those are building fees, though. Those were not plumbing and-
Right.
Yeah. Let's, okay. Go ahead, Stephen, with your motion. Go ahead. Just restate it again.
I move we table it to our next meeting when we can look at the differential between the current and the proposed.
Okay.
I'm not opposed. I just don't want to-
I don't, I don't object to tabling it, but I guess the way I would ask, if the inspector, Lynn Rita, could give us a paragraph or two.
Yeah.
On what they're-
Would help to have a little bit of a written, written piece of information about what-
Because I'm assuming this changes to keep up with the neighboring communities and yada, 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 but it'd be nice to have something.
And the fees go into a retained income fee or no?
General revenue.
They go directly? Yeah, right. Please bring it back.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll pick it up on the December 9th meeting. Let's just add it to that agenda. And if somebody can speak to it, if not in person, at least give us something in writing about that, just so we understand this. We did have a building fee revision in '25, but I don't see offhand when that are done, the other ones were done.
The previous version was 2015. Yeah, the, the-
That's good fact. Bring it all forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Next one.
Good. All right. Perfect. And we'll hold off until that for next time. All right. Special Town Meeting. Scott, any further things to talk about?
Nope. The summary's motion should be finished probably tomorrow or Monday. That's probably the latest, and I'll post those up and distribute them to everyone. The warrants online has been posted in the seven different places throughout town as well, thanks to our constables. And again, if anyone has any questions, I'll be online, or they can always reach out to me through email or phone anyways. But, and then I'll be joining Robert on the fourth for the reading, and it'll be the Saturday, the sixth, at 10:00 AM in North School.
Just for my planning, are we meeting at 9:30? Is it a special meeting first or no?
I'm going to schedule it, and if it's needed.
Yeah.
So plan on being, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't know that we have that much business, because we'll be meeting again on the ninth, but let's just schedule it for the sixth and have it. If we, usually, we usually do have a short meeting before the town meeting, so we'll just aim to do that anyway. Okay. Good. Yeah, so the, everything is findable on the town website. Hopefully you can take a look at it. All right. 250th anniversary, things are proceeding. Been, been busy. The committee's still coming up with ideas, but I think we're, we're winding down. So we will have, there are two, two ongoing things for this month. One is the holiday slash porch decorating contest, which our town clerk, Lucy Dalton, is kind of heading up. But there's been a flyer out, and you need to just look at the QR code to sign up on that. If you don't have the ability to use the QR code, just check in with Lucy at Town Hall. But people should enter that, so we know how many houses will be involved, and we can schedule a time to go around and take a look at that. And the entry date is up until December 20th, so really up until the last minute. And then there is a town scavenger hunt that has been put out. This is related to the new revised points of interest map that the committee has worked on. This is a map that was originally done back in, I think, 1967, then revised once, and now has been updated. And some of the older points of interest unfortunately have, have gone by the wayside, because a lot of them were old cellar holes and things that are really pretty much not findable anymore. But the committee has done a great job pulling together a new map. And just a little bit of a fun activity, a scavenger hunt to eight different positions, eight different locations in town, just to get people out and looking around and having a fun time, maybe during the holidays. And there'll be, there's instructions online, and you basically go look for these eight locations, and there's a little notebook where you sign the note saying that you've been there, the notebook, and then stamp your little paper that you were there. And then eventually, when you've gone to all of them, you'll turn that in to the town clerk as well. And we'll look to have those entered into a drawing for the big party on New Year's Eve, for some sort of special prize on that. And then, right now, we're planning on Santa coming and the tree lighting out front on December 13th, probably around somewhere in that 5:30 to 6 o'clock timeframe. And part of that, too, there will be already, I know the Lions Club is doing their toy drive, and the Stuff a Cruiser, please Stuff a Cruiser, is also that same day, 12:13. The Lions Club, I believe, is the weekend before, John, or the weekend after?
There's three of them.
Three of them? Okay. So there'll be various toy drives out, so keep, keep that in mind. I know the community's been incredibly generous for all the work for supporting the community cupboard. There's been a lot of food drives around town and various organizations participating and donating to that. So thank you for that. And hopefully we can keep up the holiday spirit and do some, some things over the holidays for, for the kids that this will benefit both Southampton and East Hampton kiddos, I believe. Okay, that's all we have for 250th. We will end up the year on the celebration with a New Year's Eve bonfire. To be determined, I think it's looking a little bit more like Conant Park, just so that we have wide open space and not any risk of causing any other problems. So we'll, we're still working that out with the fire department. Okay, any other business that can't wait until the next regular Select Board meeting on December 9th? Anybody? Anything? All right.
Be kind.
Okay. If not, we have a couple of personnel change forms. John, I'll let you take the first couple, and Stephen, I'll let you take the water department one, okay? John, you want to take this couple?
Sure.
All right.
Missed the old days when it was just John Smith. First one, PCF Highway Department.
Oh, yeah. I gave you a tough one. Sorry.
Mr. Nicholas, I can't pronounce the first name.
Henrikan, I guess, Nicholas?
New hire, effective November 26, 2025, PT non-benefited plow truck driver, $40 per hour as needed for storms.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Take the, well, I'll take them separately.
Yeah.
Fire Department, PCF, Richard Aldrich, resignation, effective November 17, 2025.
Second.
Second, John, Stephen? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then PCF Fire Department for Kenyon McColligan, new hire firefighter, effective November 25, 2025, part-time, non-benefited, $15.50 per hour.
Ellen, one second.
Second.
Ellen, second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then Stephen?
Sure. For the Water Department, Emmerich Henkio, apologies for mispronouncing. A new hire, water tech, effective December 1st, 2025, full-time, benefited $25.16. And as Water Commissioner, I heartily, heartily endorse this. We've gone many months where the short staff approved hiring plan and scores, scores of applicants who did not have the credentials. And this applicant has demonstrated real ambition and relevant background in the pharmaceutical and biochemical industry. So they are not yet fully licensed. They need a year of active participation with a system to be fully licensed. So that's a slight departure from the, from our aspirations. But we think we've got a great candidate who is an important complement to the staff that we have.
And so he's working on his credentials through the New England Water Association, is that right?
He passed the two tests last week that are for the water treatment and water distribution license. And after 12 months with the actual utility, then it ripens into a full license.
Got it. Okay. All right. Any questions, comments?
Not necessarily the advocate, but it just, I mean, I know the answer to this, but the-
Good timing, Brett.
The man that just walked in, that's the only, that's the only one that has a town vehicle 24/7, correct? Is the Water Superintendent. Water Superintendent's the only person-
Water, wait, please.
No, Water Department Superintendent and the Water Department is the only one that has a vehicle 24/7, correct? Mr. Commissioner?
Uh, just within the department?
Yeah.
I'm new. I was just selected. I cannot speak to that.
Why don't we have the Water Superintendent pop up and just answer that question, since you're here, Brett? Thank you for coming in. And I assume that this might be our, our candidate over here? Perfect.
As far, as far as the Water Department is concerned.
Yeah.
Right. You are the only one that has a vehicle available to them 24/7 and takes it home.
Yes.
Thanks.
That was your question. Okay.
So I wanted to affirm.
Okay. Could we, since we have our candidate here, Emmerich, would you like to just pop up and introduce yourself and say a few words? Come on up to the mic and just give us a little introduction.
Hi, this is my first time here. I actually knew. I just moved out to Belcher Town. I did an interview with, with you, and I do appreciate the kind words. It was, it was a lovely interview, and I'm really excited to start.
Mm-hmm. Okay, very good. So you'll be commuting from Belcher Town then?
Yeah, yeah, about half an hour.
Sounds good. All right. Perfect. All right. Okay. Do we have a motion?
You do.
All right. And we have a second?
Second, if I didn't already.
Okay. No further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion's approved. Congratulations. You have your new hire. I know you've been waiting for it for a long time, so glad to, glad to see we've been able to find a, find a good candidate for you. So that's good. Very good. All right. We have some-
Thank you, Brett.
Did we have some minutes to approve? Scott, are the minutes in the package? If I saw those?
I don't see them in the pack yet.
I don't think I saw them in the package. Did you have them? I don't, I don't think I have them. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let's hold off if they were in the package. I'm gonna suggest we hold off on those minutes until we meet on the 9th. I don't believe they were in my package. I-
Yeah, it doesn't look like we received them in time.
Didn't, I don't think we got them in time from our transcriber, so we'll hold off on those. So the, those are the minutes for October 28th. We'll put them off into December 9th meeting. Okay, very good. Stephen, if you want to go through the warrant list, please.
No, I don't.
I know, it's a long one.
There are 16 warrants since the last time I reported, I think. I believe that to be accurate. And I apologize, this is the boring part of the meeting. And I'll read as well as I can. W 26-9A, the amount of $45.56. W 26-13A, the amount is $252.50. P 26-16, the amount is $351,087.89. PD 26-16, the amount is $57,844.24. PD 26-16A, the amount is $306,583.20. P 26-16A, $900 even. PD 26-16B, $184.83. W 26-17, the amount is $114,352.51. P 26-18, the amount is $349,841.26. P 26-18A, the amount is $725.84. P 26-18A, PD 26-18A, the amount is $170.77. PD 26-18, the amount is $57,084.78. W 26-19, the amount is $299,428.80. W 26-19A, the amount is $184 even. P 26-20, the amount is $349,586.38. And finally, PD 26-20, the amount is $57,528.57.
Okay, that's a lot. So for those that are listening that may not understand all of our jargon here, basically, P stands for payroll, PD is payroll deductions, and W is basically our vendor warrants for various businesses that get paid by the various departments in town. So these all get invoices submitted, reviewed by the treasurer and accountant, and also coming to us. And Stephen?
And the warrant clerk?
Takes care of them for, yes.
Oh, goodness.
Takes care of them. Very good. All right, thank you. There seem to be a lot of smaller ones this time. There's a couple of, must have been some additional bills that came in at the last minute or something. Okay, other old or pending business? Anything on how we're doing with getting information in for the FY '24 audit? Just to note that the FY '23 audit is posted. That is on the website.
Thank you.
But the FY '24, we're still working on getting all the information into them. And how are we doing with that from the treasurer's point of view?
Good. We're trying to schedule their fieldwork for December, to have them out in the, for, to take a few days, and they actually meet with everyone, and they go through all the paperwork. So we're looking to schedule that probably mid-December if everything works out with timing.
That sounds good. Okay. Good. Any updates on anything? We, we know that we just have this on the, on the list of things to, to look at and to add to our list of things to get done, this acting on the prudent investor rule, as well as any updates from the East Street future construction thing? Nothing happening there yet?
Right.
Anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay. All right. We have Select Board meetings, so we will have, we'll schedule a meeting for December 6th, just a short meeting right before the Special Town Meeting. But then we'll have our regular Select Board meetings on December 9th and December 23rd. And that pretty much ends us up for tonight's meeting for the agenda. We will have an executive session, so we'll be going into that. This will be per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And this is regarding health insurance. So I will take a motion to close our current session here at about 7:46, and we will move into executive session, and we will not be coming back after that meeting.
So moved?
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
All's aye. Okay. Okay, we are officially adjourned at-
Thank you.
Sorry, I said wrong. At 6:48, sorry. Got the wrong timing here. At 6:48, we are adjourned, not 7:48.